Okay. Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the February 6th Post Falls City Council meeting. Clerk will note that all council members are present. I will announce that there are no public hearings tonight for the first time in a while, and it's going to be an anomaly. It is an anomaly because as I know, we have three, at least three, in our next council meeting. I think the Planning and Zoning Commission has...
Eight.
Eight public hearings at their next meeting. So enjoy the fact that there's not a public hearing tonight. Ceremonies, announcements, and appointments. We have a couple announcements. Post Falls City Hall and City Business Offices will be closed on Monday, February 19th, in observance of President's Day. And the Sweetheart Ball is September, is Saturday, February 10th at 6:30 PM at the Greyhound Park and Event Center. Tickets are $18 each, or $35 a couple, which shows that being married saves you money. It's a dollar, but it'll save you money. Tickets at Upscale Mail, Mountain West Bank, Washington Trust Bank, and River City Barbering. For information, call 208-502-0132. And tonight, I would like to ask the council for the appointment of Laura Horn to fill the vacancy created by Tom Malzon's resignation from the Urban Renewal Commission. Laura and her husband own a River City fabrication. We interviewed her. We had Jerry Balzell, the chairman of Urban Renewal, interview her, and she will be a good fit and is anxious to serve, so I would ask council confirmation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
She's an excellent person. Smart.
Good. Chairman, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. And next, I would like to ask for the reappointment of Nancy Hampi and Ray Kimble to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I did visit with Commission Chairman Ryan Davis, and he is supportive of the reappointment, and I would ask for confirmation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict? Linda?
I will. I'll recuse myself from number seven, the Corbin Ditch Exchange with Park and Rex.
And my understanding is we do not need official action tonight, I don't believe?
The action tonight is to declare the intent to surplus it so that we can go through the process of noticing it up for a public hearing in the future.
So your notice was timed, and we talked about that. Thank you very much. Would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the January 16th, 2018 City Council meeting. Item B is payables, January 9th, 2018 through January 30th, 2018. Item C is hideaway subdivision and preliminary planned unit development master development agreement, file number S-17-07 and P-17-01. Item D is Seventh Avenue Capacity and Safety Project, David Evans and Associates Supplemental Number Four to the Professional Service Agreement. Item E is Crown Point Sixth Edition Subdivision Construction Improvement Agreement. Item F is fiscal year 2019 budget hearing notification. Item G is license to use real property for sign placement for the slab in.
Any questions on the consent? See none, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to pass the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. As I said earlier, tonight we have no public hearings, followed by unfinished business. Tonight we have none. Next item on the agenda is citizens' issues, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council on a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. Seeing none tonight. Next item is new business. First is Avista Gas Line Easement. David Smith, gas distribution engineer from Avista. Bill Melvin, you gonna kick it off?
Yeah, just real quick, Mayor, Council. The action that we're requesting tonight is an easement to Avista for a gas line easement. That easement is on the east side of Idaho Road between Hayden and Prairie Avenue on some of the property that we have reserved for future wastewater land application out there. So Mr. Smith will, with Avista, will be going through and making a quick presentation on their overall project, but then after that, we'd be looking for an action to approve the easement document tonight.
Good, thanks, Melvin.
That is your...
David, give your name for the record, please.
Yes, I'm David Smith with Avista Utilities.
Thank you.
Let's see if I can get this to work here. All right, it looks like it's working. So again, I'm Dave Smith with Avista Utilities, and thanks so much for your time this evening and letting me speak at your City Council meeting. I'd like to give the city some information on a project I've been working on with Bill Melvin. We're calling it our Post Falls Natural Gas Reinforcement Project. So the goal of my presentation is to give you some history on why Avista would like to construct this project, give you some details on the location of the project, and also talk about restoration of the streets. So if there's any questions throughout my presentation, please feel free to ask me at any time. No need to wait till the end. So Avista's goal is to deliver safe and reliable natural gas to our customers, and one method that we use to ensure we have reliable service is we have a computer-based modeling program that we run every year to see areas of our system that might be deficient, areas that the customers have, more and more customers have hooked up, and our system slowly gets weaker over time. So we identify those areas and target areas each year to do a reinforcement project to ensure that we have that reliable service. And also, it will support future growth in our areas as well. So we identified the Post Falls Reinforcement Project a few years ago, and there's a few interstate pipeline companies that serve gas to this area. One is TransCanada Pipeline, and one is Williams Northwest Pipeline. Those are pipelines where Avista connects and gets gas from those facilities, and then we take ownership and distribute the gas out to our customers from there. So a few years ago, we identified that the Williams Northwest Pipeline that serves the majority of Post Falls has reached its maximum capacity, and it can no longer serve any future development in the area. So this reinforcement project targets that capacity constraint, and it brings gas from a different area of our system to reinforce the Post Falls area. And I have a map that'll kind of explain this at a high level. This is kind of a 100,000-foot view, you could say, of the Wrath from Prairie. And this has been a three-phase project, and this is the last phase. The purple pipeline that goes diagonally across the screen, that's the TransCanada Pipeline, and the brown pipeline across the bottom of the screen is the capacity constraint Williams Pipeline. The blue pipes, or the blue lines, rather, on the map are Avista Distribution Mains. Those are the mains that we transport the large volumes of gas through our system, and then we get to the population centers with those pipelines and then distribute the gas to customers from there. And the G symbols on the map are what we call gate stations. Those are points where we tie into those interstate pipelines and take possession of that natural gas. So like I mentioned, the Williams Pipeline being capacity constrained, we had to have a solution to continue to serve gas to our customers and to support future growth. So in 2014, we built what we called the Chase Road Gate Station. And I'm using my mouse pointer on the screener to show where that's at. It's in that white cloud. We built that gate station on the TransCanada Pipeline. TransCanada has an abundance of capacity. And then we also constructed about three miles of gas pipeline along Hayden Avenue. And what that does is set us up for the next two phases of the project. Last year, 2017, we completed the Cordillane Reinforcement. That's over in the Cordillane and Dalton Gardens area, in this blue cloud on the map. That project reinforced the Dalton Gardens and Hayden Lake areas, another area of our system where we had some weak pressures in the wintertime. So that extension of that gas line reinforced that area to ensure reliable service. And that brings me to Phase Three, which is why I'm here tonight, the Post Falls Reinforcement. That's shown in this yellow cloud. So we plan on extending a gas pipeline from that pipe we installed on Hayden back in 2014, straight south down into our Post Falls area and connect it to our existing gas pipes there. So now I want to zoom in a little closer to give you some more detail on the route that we've been working with and working with Bill Melvin. So here's another map. This one's rotated, so north is now on the left side and east is up on the map, pointed up. So the start of the project is at Hayden Avenue and Idaho Road, and you can see the majority of the project will be south on Idaho Road, with about a half-mile segment on 21st Street, and then a short 400-foot stretch on Spokane Street, ending at Spokane Street and 20th Avenue. The total project is about 14,400 feet of six-inch gas pipe. 55% of that, or 7,900 feet, is going to be installed in dirt, in the dirt right-of-way, and about 6,500 feet in asphalt. The easement area that Bill mentioned before my presentation is located in this stretch here between Hayden Avenue and Prairie Avenue. And the reason we are requesting an easement there is we want to make sure that our gas pipe is in a location that won't be in conflict with any future plans that the city has. So in early meetings with Bill, we learned that Idaho Road will likely be widened and improved north of Prairie, so we wanted to make sure that gas pipe wasn't going to be in the way of that construction. So we're proposing to install the gas line approximately 45 feet east of the edge of the existing pavement through those fields, and that'll be far enough off of the road to accommodate any future roadway construction there. And we have talked to the farmer that tends to these fields that the city owns, Mr. McLean. We have talked with him, and we actually worked with Wade McLean on the Hayden Avenue project back in 2014. We did something similar along Hayden Avenue where we were installing gas pipes through the fields there as well, and we established a real good relationship with Wade, and so he's on board with this project as well. So like I mentioned, I have been working with the city staff over the past probably eight months, several meetings, Bill Melvin, Rob Polis, and John Beecham. So we want to make sure that this project is in conformance with the city quality control standards. So in those meetings, I learned all the restoration requirements that the city has, and I've incorporated those into my design drawing. So when we send this project out for bid, it'll be, well-established, the requirements for restoration to make sure it meets the city's requirements. I want to go in a little bit more detail about street restoration, because I know that's important to the city, it's important to the citizens, and as the project manager, it's important to me as well to leave the streets in excellent condition when we're done with the project. So these are just a couple examples of this type of information that I am showing on my construction plan so that there's no doubt, there's no question, when the contractor's out there building the project, what's required. So we're going to be doing compaction testing in accordance with the city's requirements and also pavement restoration. And we're also going to use cold mix patch at the end of each day when we're in the city streets. We did this over in Cordillane last summer, and it worked really well. The cities were very pleased with it, and so were the citizens, and rather than using like a gravel patch temporarily, we want to use that cold mix asphalt. It's just a much more stable surface. It's smoother, doesn't get washboarded, doesn't spread around, no bumps, and that also allows us to do permanent paving in a longer stretch. So we found that that worked also very well in Cordillane last year, where we were paving about every 2,000 feet, we would do one solid patch at once. So it restricted the amount of traffic control, and a number of times, we're out in the street right-of-way disturbing the traffic. And then also, it gave you a nice, long patch with not a lot of seams where they start and stop, so it's much more, much smoother. And I have a few pictures of what that looked like in our Cordillane project last year. So this is the restoration that we did on Prairie Avenue last summer, and I was actually able to take Bill out there, Bill Melvin, out there and drive these routes, and he was pleased with the way this turned out as well. But this will be very similar to how the construction on Idaho Road will look. Due to the number of utilities that are in the street already, we're going to be forced to install the pipe down the southbound lane, and when we do that, we will do a full pavement restoration, very similar to what's in this picture from curb to the center of, or to the edge of the lane, rather. So as you can see, it doesn't leave any seams in the roadway. It looks real nice, it's nice and smooth as well. And then on 21st Avenue, it'll be very similar to what you see here. This is the pavement restoration on Hanley Avenue, again, last year during our reinforcement project there. 21st Street has a paved shoulder, about three to four feet wide, very similar to Hanley, and the gas pipe's going to be installed in that paved shoulder, and we'll do our best to keep the excavation on the property side of the fog line, but it's likely that the trench will cross over the fog line into the traffic lane. So rather than having a seam right there where a wheel would travel down the lane, we went all the way to the center of the lane, so as a vehicle passes down the road, they're not driving on that seam. It just makes a much more durable patch for the long run. So 21st and Spokane Street will be similarly patched like this as well. That's our plan. So for project timeline, I'd like to send the project out for competitive bid this month with the expectation of awarding the contractor the project in March. At that time, the contractor will put together the traffic control plans for the project and submit the permit applications to the city for review. And if the weather is typical, we will likely be able to start construction in April, and my plan is to finish construction in August. So just to summarize, the Williams Northwest Pipeline that serves the majority of Post Falls is at its capacity, and this project is very important to the citizens of Post Falls to make sure that we can continue to serve reliable natural gas to them and also support any future growth that is happening in the area. So that's the end of my presentation. I want to thank you all again for the opportunity to speak tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Steve?
I got a question for you. On Idaho Street, do you expect any total closures of the street, or will one lane be open at all time for traffic?
I expect to be able to keep traffic flowing, because the section where we're going to be in, out in the roadway, there's two lanes plus a median. So I anticipate the work being done in one lane and then probably have flaggers keeping two-way traffic going on the far lane, and we'll probably end up having to use some of the median for equipment to transport material back and forth. But yes, I plan on having, I expect the contractor to use flaggers and keep traffic going on Idaho.
Silly question, Bill. Why did you have to jog down 21st?
Go back to the map there. So where our existing pipeline that we're trying to reinforce is located is at Spokane Street and 20th Avenue.
Oh, okay.
So that, so Idaho Road was the most direct route from our Hayden, the pipeline that was on Hayden. Then once we got down to 21st, we had to jog over to where the pipe that we're tying into to do that reinforcement's located.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
And so we need a motion then for approval of that?
I think you're approving the easement, if I remember right.
I would move to approve the Avista gas easement, Phase Three Post Falls Reinforcement.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thank you, David, appreciate it. Next item up is the Chamber Parking Lot Cost Revisions. Mr. Manley?
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, and members of City Council, John Manley, Planning Manager, introducing the Chamber Parking Lot, the cost revisions that are being proposed associated, and also will be requesting not only an approval for those revisions and also to go to bid for this project. So what you see here on the screen is the location of this project. This was an image that was borrowed from Google Earth. As you see, there were some structures underneath. At this time, they're no longer there, but it does show that recently, there was a different environment at which now it's vacant, to be developed. I believe this got going in approximately 2015, the change in this area. You see the old houses that were there not too long ago, but now you see the vacant area that is being proposed for the Chamber Parking Lot. Right here is the ultimate design that came from JUB. JUB was awarded a contract April 18th of last year, and with that contract, this was the ultimate design. What you see here is utilizing the alley that north is pointed to the, to the left, with Fourth Avenue being south and the right. So along that alley that runs through that block, you would go one way and then meander back northward, and the reason for the one way was due to space requirements and to maximize the number of parking stalls. So the goal was to get as much parking as you possibly could with this project, and it still ended up with a good project. The costs associated with this, and I apologize for the smaller font, but how it got excerpted into this, but what you see here is kind of a breakdown. You have the base project, the design cost that was awarded with the design, then you have the project cost, and then you'd have the cost of 107,000. Now, in reality, you can't really do it for the base project, and I'll go into that because City Code does require some lighting and landscaping, but it would, it's there for you to know, like, if we just did the parking lot, what would that cost? And then what you see there was the urban renewal. I know there's been previous discussions on that, and it's known that their role in this Chamber Parking Lot was to reimburse up to 100,000, so that's reflected into this table at this, on the left side. What you see here is this add alts table, a part of this final bid set, reflected into this at the 144,400. Now, the reason for this add alts, and then you see these items listed here, the concrete steps at 7,000. The concrete steps through the design process of this are about at this location. Staff has reviewed this and, at this point, don't intend to incorporate it into this project, as it more likely can be done cheaper. But if by chance, through the project, it's there in case a cheaper price or other negotiations occur. But the intent is to get that done at a much cheaper cost. The bike rack installation is another add alt that is at about this location of the site, and then go back to the design right there. So the intent would be to get a concrete pad, but having it as an add alt leaves some flexibility so the bike rack can have different shapes and dispositions and not be stuck to one bike rack at this point in time. Site lighting. So as part of the plan, the site lightings isn't a very, a cheap endeavor that was found out through this process, but, so to light the whole site up right now didn't seem like it was necessarily necessary at this point. So staff looked at, well, how can we phase this in, and what would be the most responsible cost effectiveness at this point in time? So by placing the two central lights at this location, we have a ballard at about that location. What you see here, these are the electrical connections that are being proposed. So the plan would be you get the two lights now, the ballard, and you would leave along the eastern boundary, the capability, if at such time it was desired to provide additional lighting between the jack site and this, that we would have the underground of the structure to support that. Similarly, there's some underground conduit at this location, because if stairs go in at this location, that may be needed down the road, but maybe not at this time. So we reduce it as much as we can at this point in time and still get a good parking Now, the landscaping is on here as an add alt, because ideally, we would like to do it in-house. We don't know if we can. We've talked with Dave Farabit, and so it gives us some flexibility as whether or not, how much we do in-house and how much gets contracted out. So it's there as an add alt for that reason. When I refer to the City Code, I got some examples here of Title 18 with, in the zoning code, it talks to parking lot lighting, saying that it shall be provided on parking lots for commercial industrial sites. And I understand this is a city site, it's a public site, but it will function much like a commercial site. And then landscaping is also required per the section which I identify. So outside of buildings, parking, and driveways, they shall be landscaped to enhance the visual appeal, protect property values, and integrate buildings with the site. So the landscape plan was actually generated in-house rather than going to the landscape architect, and then we provided this to the engineer who then created this detail to go with this plan set. So and this landscape plan would meet the minimum requirements for Title 18. And the goal would be to get this project completed, be consistent, compatible with the existing site, and complement it. I've also been aware of, there's been some interest of, can this site be integrated with the DMV site? Since they're doing a parking lot there, is there any way to work on the sites collaboratively? There's some hurdles with that. They're bidding theirs out separate to our bid. If by chance, maybe we get the same bidders, that may be able to be worked out, I don't know at this point. I have a call to Sean Riley with the DMV. He's kind of heading up the DMV project, just to keep that dialogue open. Probability that though is pretty low. I don't know if Warren or Shelley, if you want to add to that at all?
It would just be if we could go ahead and cite those two projects to occur at the same time, there might be some mobilization savings to the contractor that could save us some money, so. If you have anything to add.
Yeah, essentially, if the low bidder on that project, because they're a little bit of ahead of us, that may give them the ability to have their MOB costs be a little bit lower on our bid, because they'd already be mobilized for the other job. That's about it.
We then split that savings with the county, should it, in the off-chance it materializes?
Yeah, I think we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, if it happens.
I like it.
Or they could reduce their bid to the county at that point, too.
Right.
And I do want to reiterate that how we got here is, it has been identified as a need for the parking lot. I don't know if you guys have seen, depending on what kind of daily activities we have and which are increasing since this city building and City Hall initially opened, that is definitely a need. So that's why we're here, is to facilitate that need. And then what you see here are estimates that ultimately, when you actually send the bid at, then we'd actually have that, you know, the bid pricing and reconvene at that time.
Any questions, John? We, John and Shelley and I talked about it earlier. I have never seen a bid package that long. 250 pages for a bid package. I was, parking lot, yeah, I was amazed, so.
Yeah, I asked some questions about that afterwards, and so JUB does a lot of big capital projects, and which generally have bid packages of this nature, so more than likely, they just grabbed a template of, that was work for larger capital projects, and now this, yeah, this parking lot is...
They had a smaller template, they could have saved us money, but...
I guess I just was, I was shocked. Not only is it the size of the bid package, but we're going to spend 144,000 for a parking lot, 25 spaces? I mean, is, I guess I just thought it would be a lot cheaper than that, because that doesn't even include the cost of the land.
I asked that question when the estimates first came up several months ago. I was concerned. I was concerned with the, the design costs, but we're sure that's what it was.
I guess the other side of me is, like, you know, as a city, we want, we can't ask the public to go out and create a nice-looking parking lot if we're not willing to do that. But I know where you can get some free trees in April.
And that is a bid alternate. That's landscaping is a bid alternate, so we can do that.
Well, and the steps, $7,000 for the steps that we felt could be done cheaper.
The steps can be done for significantly less.
I was thinking, too, with the landscaping, where you said you were going to check with Dave, who was here, but he left to go buy trees, whether we could do it in-house or not, and I guess I don't understand why we can't do it in-house.
A lot of it, they have their own projects that they're trying to manage throughout the year, so depending on what they have for workload and work capacity, they may or may not have individuals that could spill over and assist with this, and then if they don't, then we have to then contract that out. And then if they don't, then we have to then contract that out.
What about urban forestry? What does urban forestry could? Don't they, wouldn't they do something with landscaping?
Potentially, but that'd all be coordinated through Dave Fair and be assessed. So that's why it's an add alt.
Dave, right there.
He's right on cue.
It'd be the timing issue.
It's a timing issue, so what we do is we get a price, and we know what the maximum price is going to be for the landscaping, then we look at what it's going to cost us to do it internally. And if we have the manpower to do it internally, we can also contract it out separately to a landscaper and not through this contract. So you have several opportunities to look at what it's going to cost. Our urban forester right now is busy reviewing plan. I mean, he does a lot of plan review. And as our plans continue to come in, the, the eight public hearings that we have at P N Z, those end up being plan reviews. And so that's a lot of what our urban forester is doing right now.
But to go back to your question, Carrie, that would be the goal, is the, yeah.
And on the lighting, it's got site lighting in the original seventy-eight thousand, seventy-six thousand, and then it's got additional site lighting, but you said there's only two, two lamp poles.
Yeah. So the site lighting, that's all the underground preparation to provide the electrical conduit for all the site lighting versus the, what you see as the add alts, that's the actual site pedestals themselves.
Okay. I know nothing about it. I'm just astounded that it costs thirty thousand dollars.
The light's, bro, two lights.
Yeah, the light standards themselves are expensive, and that's one of the reasons we've, the plan is to do it as an alternative.
Yeah, okay.
But we still have to get the plumbing and that for the electrical out to them.
Okay. Any other questions?
Clarification, the intent of this lot also is to be open to the public on nights and weekends and so forth, too, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's one thing that, for example, in, in Coeur d'Alene on Saturday, my wife and I ended up driving around in circles for twenty minutes just trying to find a place to park. And if we can avoid that in Post Falls as it grows, that's, that's another.
And the, and the lighting helps create that safe environment to park until you don't incur some sort of dark area or some liabilities with that not being lit, so.
Okay. If we're calling this the Court, the Chamber Parking Lot Project, are they kicking in on this, too?
I call it the Fourth Avenue Parking Lot. I know it's being called the Chamber, but actually, Jamie and I did meet, and as far as the steps go, they will work with us to try to get the steps, but.
I would move to approve the Chamber Parking Lot and approve it to go out for bid. Is that what you're looking for, John?
Do we need to make anything on the monetary elements of it?
I think that's fine.
Oh, okay.
It will come back to you for final approval.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thanks. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Next item, ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we have one of each. The first is a resolution on the adoption of two thousand and eighteen policy changes, but it doesn't say which policy.
Personnel, I assume.
Personnel.
Is this the personnel, personnel policy?
Move to approve the resolution adoption of the two thousand and eighteen personnel policy changes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is the Plan Unit Development Text Amendment Ordinance.
Move to place the ordinance, Plan Unit Development Text Amendment on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, repealing municipal code sections eighteen point oh eight point oh eight oh, eighteen point two oh point oh five oh, eighteen twenty point oh six oh, eighteen twenty point oh eight oh, eighteen twenty-one ten, and eighteen twenty-one sixty, amending municipal code section seventeen point oh two oh six oh, eighteen oh eight oh three oh, eighteen twelve oh one oh, eighteen twenty-one seventy, and adopting new municipal code sections eighteen twenty oh five oh, eighteen twenty oh six oh, eighteen twenty oh eight oh, eighteen twenty-one ten, eighteen twenty-one sixty, and eighteen twenty-one eighty, to adopt quasi-judicial hearing procedures for land use actions, allowing a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and allowing a de novo appeal to the city council, adopting legislative hearing procedures for land use actions, allowing a public hearing before both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council, authorizing the zoning administrator to render interpretations of the zoning and subdivision codes, and allowing for administrative appeals and other administrative procedures, adopting a new definition of open space, and adopting new planned unit development regulations, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance, Plan Unit Development Text Amendment, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate numbers and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
Can I have Warren read that one more time?
Mr. Wolf got lost on the numbers.
Yeah, no, it's fine. I'm good.
Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up is the administrative staff reports, proposed land exchange, Corbin Ditch. Mr. Fair.
Can we get a sunshiny picture up there? That's really depressing. That really is bad.
Could look like that next week. See if this is a little bit better. At least it's a green color.
Blue skies.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for giving this time to, give you an update on our Corbin Ditch encroachment and our proposed land exchange to address that issue. Our goals upon our encroachment, or at least a few of them in there, have to do with, it's, our approach is based upon the type of encroachment, the severity of the encroachment, and just some of the general background information we've had on it. So each one is approached a little bit differently, trying to find that win-win situation for us and the neighbor. We have to ensure that the public use is not negatively impacted by our proposed solutions. We have to ensure that there is no safety or health hazard involved. We try to find solutions that keep us out of litigation, and we also look to see if there's any improvements we can make upon services. This one has been going on for quite a while. Started in two thousand and thirteen, we did our initial survey from Corbin Park West to Pleasant View Road. We felt that was the easier stretch of the Corbin Ditch to address, in that we found three areas of encroachment. Two were fairly minor, and we've dealt with those. The third one was a little more complicated. It included a building. So we found the encroachment, we addressed it with the owner. He hired a second survey company to come in. They had a disagreement over about two feet, but it was agreed there was encroachment. And we also reviewed all our survey records at that time. For the next two years, we had discussions with owners, with the survey companies, we did onsite reviews, we came to some agreements, but the reality is we had a personality conflict between the owner and our survey company. So we came back to you in two thousand and sixteen. We proposed to break this loose and keep it out of the courts, to go with a new survey company, do more in-depth research on it, and you guys agreed to that, and we hired another survey company. This last year, they've done research, it's been completed, we've met with the owners with the desired outcomes, he's met with numerous other surveyors that were involved. We went back all the way to nineteen eleven, looking at the records, and it makes it complicated. I'll show you in a second, the location, but there was a pump station there. So some of those deeds and verbiage were a little ambiguous. Also, they found that in eighty-nine, the survey was off seven feet. So I had to go back to the original surveyor on that one, and they agreed that the mistake was made, so everything's getting cleaned up. That just makes it a little bit longer, but we have come to a point where we've reached an agreement that we feel is good for the city. The county surveyor has looked at it and agrees that it cleans up some of the issues they have, and the homeowner's willing to do that change, too. So that's where we're at today with the proposed change. This is a G I S view of it, so you can see where it is. Corbin Ditch is right in here, back up there. Pleasant View is here, and Corbin Park is this direction. This is the area where we had the encroachment. The lines are in there, but that's G S lines. They don't always match up, so you see a lot more encroachment on that than really exists. That's why we go out and survey, because until you're right on the ground, you don't, there are lines on a computer. What it looks like on the survey as they did it, pulling up stuff like that, that's hard to read. That's even worse, but I wanted to highlight the fact that that's all the records that were reviewed. Down in here, in this area, that's all the surveys to that. So we really went back to make sure we were really comfortable with what we had and that the homeowner could see the process. Once again, we're trying to keep out of litigation. So what we have before you is, this whole thing's over twelve thousand square feet. If I can get up there. This is the area that we have, the encroachment. There's a little spur in here that makes it real awkward. That came up in some of the old documents. So we're looking at cleaning that up and trading out this spot for here, a little piece right in there, and that section in there. So it's equal land trade. It still provides us the required access we need to put a trail in there. Gives us fifty feet between their property up in here. It's about fifty to fifty-five feet, more than enough. It's actually the flat ground, which was good for us, and then brings us up to Pleasant View. So that takes care of that portion of that encroachment. Explain right in here what you see there. This is also the trail that are the ditch there. Once we get this cleaned up, we will be going to the homeowner in here. They have a piece in here and here that are just little pieces of law. We'd like to go back and have that cleaned up, so that'll be coming back later on this year, so we can tie it all in. The idea behind that spot is to have a trailhead there for an offshoot of the Corbin Ditch, and that will tie into the Centennial Trail. Or if we go down along the river, that spur, that's been looked at, so.
Any questions to Dave?
Dave, can you go back to that picture in a second? Explain to me what, what advantage that we have in acquiring those green pieces, that one and the bigger one?
This little piece here and this little piece here, that makes the county surveyor happy, so he is willing to approve this land lot. It's a lot line adjustment. It cleans up these things, so we're not into court. My time is fairly, fairly, I can't say it right now. Anyhow, relatively inexpensive compared to going to court. I guess I can say it. What we really wanted to do was square this off. We know we're taking a risk in there, but we, he can't trade a neighbor's land. And it didn't do us any good. We originally looked at just making this wider, but it just made these parcels awkward. And we deal with so many problems in land lots that if we can clean it up, it just made sense. We would like to have more of a direct route going into here, and then we would like to start pursuing that. If it doesn't happen, we would simply have the trail come out here, that's twenty-five feet, connected into there, and turn this more into a parking lot. So it doesn't really affect us either way, but.
So we will be able to use that sliver of green?
Yeah, it's, it's twenty feet wide by, I don't know, hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy feet.
Okay. I guess when I just looked at it, it looked like we were getting nothing for something.
Yeah. And the reality is, our concern was to have enough space right in here. If we could not have had that, then we'd probably be looking at court, because we'd be looking at structures and law and hardscape and everything else. We were satisfied that that wasn't being affected at all.
Any questions? Thanks, Dave. We need a motion directing staff to schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, so tonight's action is you're declaring on the record your intent to, to make this exchange. From there, we'll notify it up for a public hearing. We have to notify that for fifteen days, so it'll be set out to the next two meetings.
March sixth.
March sixth.
Have a motion.
So declared.
Is that good enough?
We can work with that.
We got the thumbs up.
I'll, I'll second his declaring.
We have a motion to second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Abstain.
Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Mayor comments tonight, I have none. Counselor comments?
Al. I wanted to ask staff, if we have, have we ever looked into providing high-speed fiber network as a, another utility for the city?
We have looked at it, but it's been a long time.
I just read an article about Heeman, Idaho, that's doing that.
Yes.
Pretty interesting, so.
Okay. Is that a request to maybe look when time allows?
It might be something I, I pass on to the rest of, as counsel, to see if anybody has interest in that. Essentially, what it does is it's just, just like we provide water and sewer to our citizens, we could then go to the expense of creating a broadband, high-speed internet network available to our citizens and, and then tax them accordingly.
Does that compete with the private sector?
Of course, I was going to ask you. Yes, and we put in the infrastructure, then the private sector basically takes over from there. So they, they buy it from us. It's, it's pretty complicated. I can't really explain it in five minutes, but I will send some information out, and if you're interested, interested, we can pursue that.
Good. I wish we.
That's it.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we do need an executive session tonight, correct?
Yes.
For how long?
Ten, ten minutes, yeah.
Move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seven four dash two zero six E to consider preliminary negotiations involving matters of trade or commerce in which a governing body is in competition with governing bodies in other states or nations for that no action will be taken, and the session will last approximately ten minutes.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We'll enter executive session.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We'll enter executive session. Call the meeting back to order. Are there any motions to come forward?
Adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You need adjourned, thank you very much.